Did you still work in radio?
Well, you know, a little bit on the side, it's not my main job.
It's just assumed that you're live all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. And I know some guys have been having trouble in the past. Thinking they were not glad, said a few things. Surprise.
Pretty much just the same file.
That's the way I approach it.
Nowadays, everything's.
Yeah.
So Brad, you're there? I'd measure the work of myself. My eyes just. But I couldn't see my. So I didn't recall anymore. Trying to do fire away, trying to check on how and everything else in my eyes.
I've broken up. Eyes in these trials, it left me forever.
We didn't worry about those.
Well, we've got some interference involved.
Our sound is pretty sweet.
Oh, yeah, Tressio yellow igloos.
It was called.
My brother-in-law, I think he uh filled that up probably a hundred times.
Maybe they're late.
Yeah.
Late arrivals. Maybe it's all people out of the hallway.
Oh, my. Where are the chairs?
There he is. How are you doing, Adam?
Well, how are you?
I'm doing well. In here? Yeah, seventy-one.
I'm good.
Yeah. I just get them in. I turned them on, turned them both on low yesterday to make sure.
You're really good. Yeah. All along, it's gonna be like crazy.
You made it in. That was the thing. Yeah, you were a big one.
Well. You can hire from burning this out. You can stay where it's at. Probably seven forty. Instead of work.
That's a good.
I was going with eighty-five, you know, and so.
Good morning. How are you?
Your spot, your best.
Uh, not back home would be great if you could get there.
All right. You're by the place right, you need an ass. It's in the aisle. Well. I had already listened. I call.
You know, nothing to notice. I'll tell you. On this plan, I say what I do.
On our needs.
Yeah. Remember all that coffee thing.
Well, they'll change that when I have to see you.
President. I mean, how does that they get the form?
They get, because they get a copy of the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, they did. They changed that immediately. Yeah. You know, they get a copy of the plan and then they start scraping through them, man.
This is a whole eighty-eight acres. Yeah, and some did. Didn't let them, of course, none of it where they've got. Where they've got for a playoff now. We've been around and around them much.
I'm getting burned as a picture.
Good morning. Are you some good?
But you want to turn that knee down, but you got to propose that. I put that every hour on. You didn't. Oh, really?
How are you? Long as I have the.
We could be in that.
Very well. Congratulations to you.
Yes.
We're changing this.
Morning.
Morning.
I don't want videos on the door. They have to have only grandma on daily. Three weeks. So we're just. Going to go. The way you're doing that.
So who wrote your report? What's your report?
Oh, a question. I actually ran it, but I don't have any permissions on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other time I had to run in. I'll run in five months. So you might don't produce it myself. But you're last one to give out this correction. But being that. But I'm doing okay.
How you doing, man?
Eric, you?
I'm good.
Good.
If anyone. Would like to make public comments under in the public comment, you need to fill out a form right here. Except for the uh. The public hearing will have on a note through trucks that that you don't need to sign up for. One minute.
You're applying soon.
All right, it's nine AM. You please rise. I have asked Pastor Adam McElroy with First United Methodist Church here in Canton to open. To open us in a word of prayer. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are thankful, Lord, for today, the opportunity to merge from our homes, see the light of the sun, Lord, and to gather. And it would be a valuable work and business in our county. We're grateful, Lord, for this opportunity to uh to be together, Lord. We're thankful, Lord, for our freedom. Opportunity to assemble, the opportunity to work. We're thankful, Lord, for our commissioners. We pray you would bless them through the gift of your Holy Spirit with wisdom to guide them in the work and business of today. Pray, Lord, you would bless the town. We bless our community, oh, Lord, that it be filled with prosperity, with love for you, with generosity for our people. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one who say, under God, one and invisible.
Thank you all for being here. I will call this meeting quarter at nine oh two. And we do have a forum. All commissioners are present. Are there any general announcements? There are no general announcements. Then we'll move on to public comments. Any public comments? None? Very good. Item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda items considered routine by the commissioner's court will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless county judge or commissioner requests. Any item to be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. Are there any items that need to be uh removed, considered separately? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So a little person second. No.
Motion has been made in second. All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. All right, at this point in time, item number five is a public hearing. We will close our regular uh meetings and have a public hearing in which regarding the establishment of a uniform. Know through trucks on most or all county maintained public roads in precincts one, two, three, and four, as defined by. Two fifty-one point one fifty-two of the Texas Transportation Code. So we will go into a public hearing at nine oh eight three. All right, is there anyone that would like to speak on the know-through trucks?
Judge, I'd like to speak. This is a. An issue that especially up in precinct three and precinct two, we get a lot of damage from trucks cutting from one state highway over to another state highway via our county road. So uh. We've been. Doing it one road at a time for the past seven years that I've been involved in, when we haven't issued. And so what we're doing, what what? What I'm after here is to uh make this a countywide, or at least a precinct-wide know-through trucks. I'm not fixing to go post it on every road, but if I have an issue, then I can go post it and then the constable will will help us monitor that road and see if we can prohibit these trucks. From coming through there. We're not limiting trucks. If they have business on the county road, we want them to take care of their business on that county road. This is just when they are going from one state highway to another state highway and they're using the county road to save on a few miles from doing so.
And in order for it to be effective, a sign must be posted.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. All right, no further public comments. I will close the public hearing at nine oh five. Yeah, we will now go back into our regular commissioner court meeting. And we will move to item number six, discuss and consider the establishment of a uniform know-through trucks on most. Or all county maintained public roads in precinct one, as defined by two fifty-one point one fifty-two of the Texas Transportation Code. And again, we will, we will do this precinct by precinct, so each commissioner can. If he wants to implement this, he might.
Well, yes, gentlemen, a precinct, well, we have a similar problem. We have a lot of instances where people are cutting from one farm road to another, or from one state highway to a foreign market road down the county roads. And it's usually, in often cases, a truck that weighs heavier than what the road should sustain. Other places are getting hung on railroad tracks, damaging the tracks, damaging the trucks, damaging the road. So I feel like this would be a good thing to implement for precinct one. Like we said, it will not prevent someone from getting to a location they need to go to. They can still go down a county road to get to a location on that road where you have business. It just stops the people cutting through from highway eighty to seventeen, or seventeen to sixteen fifty-two and such as that. So I make a motion to effect that we accept it for precinct one.
All right, motion made. Is there a second? Any discussion?
On the all roads, Ted, or or most?
We're gonna do it on all roads and precinct one.
Okay. All right. So uh, any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss, consider establishment of a uniform know-through trucks on most or all county maintained public roads in precinct two, as defined by two fifty-one point one fifty-two of the Texas Transportation Code.
Yeah, I make a motion that we uh. Post know-through trucks sign on all county maintained public roads in precinct two, as defined by two thousand one point one fifty-two of the Texas Transportation Code.
Stay. All right, motion is made in second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number eight, discuss, consider establishment of a uniform know-through trucks on most or all county maintained. Public roads in precinct three, as defined by two fifty-one point one fifty-two of the Texas Transportation Code.
So motor Pearson with exception, it'll be all roads.
Okay. All right. Motion been made in second. Is there any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider establishment of a uniform know-to trucks. On most or all county maintained public roads in precinct four, as defined by two fifty-one point one fifty-two of the Texas Transportation Code.
I'll make a motion to have all county roads in precinct four defined by two five one point one five two, the Texas Transportation Code. Being nothing trucks.
Okay.
Second person.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss, consider approval of the authorization of sale of fireworks during the Texas Independence Day period from February twenty-fifth. Two thousand twenty-four to March second, two thousand twenty-four. This is. Motion made by Commissioner. Uh, Brad, second by Commissioner Melton. All is in favor, say aye. All opposed like sign. I apologize, I didn't ask for discussion. Item number eleven, discuss, consider signing a state application for repairs on Cedar Creek Site one-on-one located on Van Zant County Road thirty-nine oh eight. Presented by the Kaufman Van Zant Soil and Water Conservation District. Oh, very good.
Owen.
I'm Owen Castro. I'm the district technician for Kaufman Van Zant Soil and Water Transportation District. And we are requesting that the county sign this repair application. This will be for a state-funded repair, structural repair on Cedar Creek Site one-on-one. Uh, this repair is needed due to damages occurred on the dam and spillway by. The landowner. And uh. This application will go to the state soil water conservation board for their approval. If they approve it, they will hire an engineering firm to come out and look at the dam and spillway. To assess, to assess what damages are done and what needs to be done to repair them. At that point, uh, they will come up with a dollar figure. And then it will go to the state, okay, is everything involved in it? It will go to a bid process. Very similar to what it's doing, fixing going right now, two other repairs to the state. There is no cost to the county other than the county being the contracted officer for the for the project. And there is an administration fee that will come back to the county. Now, that's normally it's a five percent fee. It will normally will cover all, if you go outside to hire an outside firm to do the contracting. It will cover those expenses. And you will be reimbursed for them, including those expenses involved. I think everyone has some pictures and has an application. Uh, what happened, the landowner went in, cut the dam. Installed a secondary pipe through the spillway. About any authorization. He also built a burn about seventy-five percent. Across this, you know, outfield of spillway, which blocks the spillway, to put in him a gun range. And he has been contacted about this and he denies that he had anything to do with it, which. We have records to prove that he. It was done while we don't have property. Uh, Shannon has a, has a letter that she's gonna send to the property. He has also denied us access to the property. And she's gonna send him a letter saying that we do have access to the property at any time. Uh, this is one of the situations for the landowner, thinks he can just do whatever he wants to on his land and. I think he's already found out that he is in trouble with the with the federal government, well, the state government, the local government. Involved in this situation. Uh, after we find out for sure what it will cost to. Put this back to original condition. Uh, possibility that the the district and the county will involve in a lawsuit against this landowner for that amount. To recover the damages that was done. So what I'm here for today is to request that y'all would sign this application, so we can go ahead and get this application in and get the process started.
Is there a motion to sign this application?
Judge, I make a motion that we authorize the county judge to sign this application. And while we're making this motion, I'd like, also like for the uh, the court to authorize Mr. Melton to oversee this. And this is in precinct three, but uh. But Mr. Melton has got a lot of experience on redoing these dams, a whole lot more than I do. That's one reason. Second reason is it's possible, we hope not, but it's possible that it could carry in to twenty twenty-five. And Pearson won't be here. He'll be around, but he won't be here. So uh, that's, I want to add that to the deal. If that's okay with Mr. Melton.
Would you uh, could you authorize me to sign the document?
Sure. If that's a, if that's a, is that okay, Sam? That's, yeah, I thought the county judge had to. I'll amend that. I'll, I'll change that motion since we don't have a second. That I, that we put Mr. Melton over this and authorize him to sign the application.
Second.
All right, motion been made in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Do we have the documents?
I gave you three opposite.
Okay, okay, we, okay, we got it. All right.
When you, when you, when y'all sign them, you give me a call and I'll figure it out.
I will.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
All right, item number. Twelve, discuss and consider board appointments for E S D number one.
Yes, uh. Commissioner Judge, this is in in my precinct totally. And every two years, these board members rotate either three or two. And this year, two are rotating back on. And it's Ross Hamilton and. Let me get this computer working here. Tom Trow. And both of these are wanting to come back and serve. So I make a motion that we do appoint Tom Trow and Ross Hamilton to the E S D one board.
All right, motion made. Is there a second?
Second person.
Is there any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Uh, item number thirteen, discuss, consider meeting location for the Van Zant Historical Commission.
Oh, yes, I talked to Tim this morning, and then we're gonna have a meeting yesterday and it got canceled. So he called me this morning and asked if we could table this and put it on the next.
Okay. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Item number fourteen, we also need to table. This is a uh, application. This is discussed, consider approved, reapplying for the voca grant to fund victims assistance projects for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five term. This is a, a Tom Curry's item, and she is in court today and is not available, and she asked that it be tabled. So is there a motion to table?
So motor person.
Second. Motion been made second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of the harmonious RV Park Plaid located in Van Zant County Road twenty-one twelve in precinct two.
Uh, yes, commissioners and uh, Judge, this is in my precinct and we have went over this uh, application in the plat thoroughly. And then they have complied with all the rules and regulations of the Van Zant County subdivision, RV Parks. So I make a motion that we accept this for filing only.
Say it.
All right, motion been made in second. Is there any further discussion? You want to give us an idea of what what the RV park is gonna be about? How many spaces or?
Yeah, let's see. We collected money on.
Spaces.
Yeah. So it's a hundred spaces right now. At, what do we collect on you?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand five hundred dollars. So we've done, done our part on this.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss consider approval of selling a nineteen ninety eight International Distributor Truck. Been number one H T S C A B N nine W H five two five four one one for twenty five thousand dollars from Roden Bridge Precinct Four to Roden Bridge Precinct One.
Yeah, I'll put uh, put this on there. Uh, we have a distributor truck that we do not use and um I go with Commissioner Pratt and they do use one and they need one. And so I asked him, he would like to buy from the same class that we bought it, uh, I believe two years ago. And uh he would like to have it, so I was gonna sell it to Chad. I make the motion, I make the motion to sell it to precinct one.
And I'll say the motion. Alright, motion has been made in second, any further discussion?
Yes. What we're looking into is uh doing some spot seal on roads and this truck would be very good for that. Would offset our costs tremendously. Allows to treat many more roads utilizing this truck. That's the direction we're trying to move forward with. That's why I got with him about purchasing the court, purchasing this truck from y'all. So I appreciate the court would approve it.
I think it's wonderful that we're utilizing equipment from each other's precincts to help uh get the job done. Not having to go outside. Uh, so any further discussion? All is in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider the sale of a nineteen ninety nine International Haul Truck, been number two H S F R A M R six X C zero five eight six six nine. Van Zant I D nine two three six for five, five thousand five hundred dollars from Roden Bridge Precinct Three to Roden Bridge Precinct One.
Yes, sir. Uh, similar to the same thing. I had an opportunity, uh you'll see item number eighteen, I had an opportunity to upgrade this truck from a uh nineteen ninety nine model to a two thousand nine model. And uh, I was gonna put it in the Renee Bates, so I was either gonna trade it in or put it in Renee Bates. So the trade in value, I'm, I'm buying this from Abel uh Enterprise over in Grand Slane. And they offered five thousand five hundred dollars on the trade in value. And then I was talking to Mr. La Pratt and he lost the haul truck. Uh, he's got some damages to one. Some major repairs he's gotta do. And he said, well, I believe I'll, I'll sell the one I've got and buy this one. It's a good truck. Ride's very, very rough, but it's a real good truck. Or what it is, it's got five hundred thousand miles on it. And I had a chance to upgrade, so I make a motion. I'm sticking my neck out here. If y'all don't let me buy this two thousand nine, I'm not gonna have a truck. So I'm gonna make a motion that we transfer this truck uh for five thousand five hundred dollars from three to one.
And I'll say it before I do, I'd like to explain, so the truck I used primarily in my sand pit was when my haul trucks blew uh blew the blow early. And it's gonna be expensive repairs, so the last meeting we added it to the auction list and then I'll use this to replace that truck. And I say it.
Right, motion made in second, any further discussion? All is in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eighteen, discuss consider the purchase of a two thousand nine International Prostar, been number two H S C U A P R five nine C zero nine one eight three nine for twenty four thousand dollars for Roden Bridge Precinct Three.
Yes, sir, Judge. This is a truck that will replace the one that we just uh moved to precinct one. Uh, I make a motion that the court allows uh precinct three to buy this truck.
Say it. Alright, motion is made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Keegan. Can you contact the sheriff or see if he's out in the hallway? Okay, item number nineteen, discuss and consider over forty five day travel reimbursement for County Clerk Election Department, Emily Bell.
This is one where uh we usually, when we have elections, we run uh back and forth to different uh locations, which was precinct four Kenny Barn and also delivering equipment. Uh, I actually turned in all the bills on the mileage and stuff. This one here somehow got, I think, obviously stuck with the, another one that we had turned in, so I came back up to my office with the entire thing completed, so I turned it back in. We're just a little late on.
Alright.
So moved, Pearson.
Very good. Alright, motion made in second, is there any further discussion? Not, all is in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Item number twenty, discuss and consider approval for sheriff to create two deputy cadet positions in the sheriff's office as discussed and discuss how they will be funded. Sheriff, you're up.
Alright. Good morning.
Morning.
Whoa. You missed number twenty, uh, Judge.
Wrong, but it is.
The utility contract?
No, that's actually a big decision, it's twenty three. Number twenty four, I got, we must have early bird though.
I must get the old.
Alright, we're good to go. You're up, Sheriff.
Yes, sir. We could organize here at this point.
You want, you wanna turn it sideways so that you get a better shot and camera shot? They're getting profile anyway, not the back of your head.
Good morning, good morning. I'm gonna try to get to this that coffee this morning. Uh, this has been an ongoing deal since before I got over to Sheriff's Office and made it twenty two. It's just staffing issues for, especially for our deputies. With the Senate Bill twenty two, what I found, we've done pretty well now in our recruiting on for our jail, for our deputies. Uh, we're able to maintain, we're full time, full staffing. We're losing one, she's going full time, she's in the reserves, military. And she's gonna be deported for a year. She's left here in the last couple of days, she did it out, so there's no surgery here. We've got some other people are able to step up, we've got some more applications also. We're interviewing this week, I think we have a few more applications coming in, so staffing's good there. Our dispatch, we've been able to fill our additional spots, we got twelve positions. We're, we're good at the dispatch. On the deputy side, we're still running shorthand as we have been since before I got there. I think as of this morning, uh county positions again, including myself, I show twenty nine piece officer positions we've got. We're still seven, we're seven officers down. Uh, one minute this morning, he came to work for us at the jail about a few years ago. Uh, Jonathan Basin, he's out here working security this morning. He worked for us in jail, did a good job for us there. He had the opportunity, we he worked full time in the jail. Went to Police Academy, commuted back and forth to remotely to Silver Springs to do the academy nights, so he worked full time during the day at jail. Went to school at night from the academy, he graduated, passed the state test, he's working for us as a deputy now. What I'd like to do here for the future to try this program, this wasn't my idea, came up with it, found some other counties are doing this, it's been successful for them, and we'll talk to y'all about it, be to establish we have a lap salary, I'm not asking for additional money, we have a lap salary from the lap salaries, the usage, we can't fill the money's there. Would be to try a test program with this, where we hire people through our jail. But instead of having them work full time, this is accelerate program. A nighttime academy, I think it's seven to nine months long. If they go to school at night. If they go full time during the day, it's five to seven months. This is off the website, Mix Texas Police Academy. The difference in timing to the coordination of classes, weather related issues, days they have to cancel, when instructors were available, when they can get these courses completed, the core courses they have to teach. So the academy runs five to seven months long for daytime academy. What I'd like to do is establish two cadet uh positions. Where we could take people that come to work for us, they work in the jail, they're good employees. They showed up for work. They've done us a good job in the jail. I've got two people back here now, one of those been with us for about, well, he's got his five years shifted, I believe. Uh, for five years, uh, service with the county. And the other one's been with us, um, she came about the time I came there, she's getting, she's got a year and a half, getting close to two years of servicing with us. Would be to pay them full time to go to the academy. My suggestion would be to pay them a cadet position, equivalent to what their jailer's salary is, pay it out on his lap salary funds. Um, the research I did on this, where the idea came up, I had seen a posting that Montgomery County Sheriff's Office had done, uh, advertising these cadet positions. Uh, did some checking, Kaufman County also does this, I spoke to Sheriff Beavers over there. I've spoken to Red River County. Uh, they started this in two thousand eighteen, they've only done two positions through this since eighteen. And they're gonna do another one here, it looks like they're gonna have another candidate that'll come up here pretty quick. When I asked Sheriff Beavers next door, he's done this since two thousand seventeen, the final question I asked him was is, did he consider this program to be successful for uh, for his office and is it something they'll continue to do? His response, he said, yes, sir, if it's not for this program, I'd be down several deputies that makes a depp, better deputy and at the end of the day. They're growing their own people over there that work in jail. They're familiar with the sheriff's office, they're going through their incentive for this academy. So I'd be glad to answer any questions I fit for you, but I'm asking today would be to create two cadet positions out of this. There's academy starts, the next day academy starts in Palestine, it's the closest location. It starts in February. February twentieth. Which graduates in, will be February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September. Somewhere between August, September, where we have once they pass their state license, we have two people ready to go to work. As a deputy for us.
So they're, they're not gonna be working in jail, they're just gonna be going full time in their camp.
Accelerate the program. Their, their current employees with us, their tenured employees with us, they're, they're good employees. They work full time. Their job would be to go to the academy, would be paid to go to the academy.
So you'll have to hire two to take their place.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I've talked with Captain Stucker about this. It's, it, it's doable from his end, we can, we can get this done. Like I say, the salary raise can fit the jiggers. We're able to get, we're getting applications, people are coming in to keep the jail staff. We'll just do a short of that.
Is there any preventative where, you know, if we send them to this academy, they get out of the academy and then, well, you know, this county over here has paid me twenty thousand dollars, thanks, thanks, or doing that for free, I'm gonna go over here now.
Yes, sir. And I, I talked to them about that Kaufman County does do, I've got a copy of it, it's a two page contract they do with employees. Uh, the one that Sheriff Beaver sent me, it was for, it's, it's a very basic uh, contract. I've got a copy of it, y'all might take a look at it. It was for descending to air conditioning school for air conditioning tech. And what it is, it asks, because the county, the money they put, they're asking them for two years of employment with the county after they complete the training, so the county can't repeat the cost of.
You said the academy starts in September?
No, February.
February twentieth ends in September.
Well, my issue is we, we, and it's in our budget group, we, we've definitely made a statement last year that we would not shift around any employee, uh, leftover employment funds in this year's budget. We, we discussed that in our budget plan. Uh, so it's not that I'm against this.
Yes, sir.
But another thing, if we're gonna do this for the sheriff's office, then we need to do it for Roden Bridge. We've got people in Roden Bridge that need their driver's license and we do not pay for them to go get their driver's licenses. And so what, so we're gonna immediately open up a can of worms, uh, somebody's gonna say, well, you're gonna pay for their education, why don't you pay for my education? So we, we've got, I, I don't see how we can handle this today. We're gonna have to have a workshop on it and, and figure out how we're gonna do this, but we, did we not put it in our, our policy this year that we not, we would not be moving any uh employment funds?
I think it was employment funds and into working funds.
Something other than personnel. I don't know, we weren't gonna move personnel's or salary money into fixed assets or repairs, but we couldn't move it in the same.
Well, we, we don't, we, we've got in a big mess last year of taking excess and uh, and employee funds, personnel funds, and giving raises during the middle of the year to employees. And we, we discussed that we're not gonna do that this year. That's all that stuff should be done at a budget time. That's why we're doing that there. We should not be doing that in the middle of the year. Nothing against your deal, Joe, it's a principle here. That stuff should be done during budget time.
So.
I would bet there is a raise though.
No, you're gonna, you're about to create, you're gonna have to create two more employee positions to replace these people at the jail. So you're adding, you're adding two, two employee positions out there with existing funds. This is budget time issues.
I believe last Commissioner Court meeting, we did exactly the same thing. When we created a part time temporary position for precinct two uh JP to do training until the new uh, uh, for two weeks. This is, is no different than what we did.
So then that's two weeks, th- this is from now on.
No.
Yes, sir.
This is from budget to budget.
From budget to budget. Soon as these two people get out of the academy, Joel has the right to put two more people in the academy.
You also have to look at it. He said the principal, Keith, uh we're always short of deputies. And we need deputies. And this gives us a chance to, hey, grow our own two deputies too, and they can start in September.
And I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm saying it's a budget time issue. This is things that we should discuss when we're building our budgets.
I'm not gonna disagree with you, but that's gonna be next October, when we have the opportunity to do it, or right now. And we're gonna be waiting, you'll be, you'll be delaying it a year and a half of getting two new deputies.
Yes, I understand that, but that we've built, there's all kinds of issues that could come up that wouldn't change, okay, that will we can do that now, gonna put it off, that's right, that's the way it works. You build your budget one time a year. That's the way it's designed to be done.
Well, this, this would go through September, so it's only for this year and he can then create the position in his new budget. If he, if he wants to continue it, it doesn't mean he has to continue.
Okay, we're gonna add, we're gonna add two people in each precinct or Roden Bridge people to go get their CDI licenses?
It, it's up to you if you've got the funds to do it, cause he's got the lap salary funds to fund it.
It's also a policy change, we wanted to make a policy change for him to pay for their school, like that, policy change for us to send him to the place they school. Joe, I don't think anybody opposed the idea, it sounded like a great idea. But I kinda gotta agree with Mr. Pearson, we have a workshop, we'll work the details out, we could, we got another meeting this month that would get your approval and time to get them in in February, if we get a workshop done between now and then. And, cause there's a lot of detail we gotta work out. Where are you gonna pull the training side of this from? Cause the lap salaries and we cover the employee. How long is this position gonna last? And motor transportation down there, how's it gonna work out for the rest of the county? There's a lot of in and outs, we need to cover that. I don't think we could do in the thirty minute window we have for agenda out. So that's why I feel like I'm probably trying to schedule a workshop sometime between now and the next meeting and hammering this out, so we're ready at the next meeting to go, would be a good idea. If that's all right with you.
Yes, you got, and my apologies, I wish I'd have come up with this idea when we were back in budget. Uh, it's something I came across and made some phone calls, started calling about it and, but I run it by you to see the shots for it. But I understand.
Sheriff, do you have any vacant jailer positions now?
Actually, yes, sir, we do, cause we're gonna make uh we've had, I believe, two people working as temporary sergeants, don't do any sergeant.
We currently have one building, and most of all, we had one of those leading.
Yes. One's been in and out for training, parented, deployed with military and uh, I believe she I believe it started on the fourteenth, she went on, I believe, fourteenth or sixteenth. So if we, we, I believe we have one, we're anticipating, we're gonna have one more here shortly.
Alright. Uh, so is there a motion to table this item?
It's on me.
Second.
Okay, um. Uh, Chad. Yeah, Keith Pearson, second. And then before we actually vote, do we, do we want to uh set the special or the work? special or the workshop date while we're all together?
You said it, as soon as possible.
Yeah, pretty quick.
Okay.
Sometime next week.
Gonna do it, uh, Wednesday next week? Wednesday at nine?
Yeah.
Alright, Wednesday at nine, we'll have a workshop to discuss this. All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion been tabled. Item number twenty-one, does this consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted?
So moved, Pearson?
Alright, there's a, say it.
Say it.
Motion been made. Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Alright, now we will, uh, end our regular session, or we will, we go into a closed executive session in compliance with section one, uh, five five one point oh seven two, the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. And once we are complete the executive session, we will come back and, uh, have any item, have item number twenty-four to discuss and any items from the executive session. So I thank you for your participation.